Okay, I call to order the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, November 21st, 2024. It is 6:32 PM. Present this evening are Commissioners Lisa Milkovich, Pete Heristo, Michael Henry, Ned Hacker, Jake Pearson, and Michael Richards. I am Maryne Patterson. I am the Chair. From staff, we have Zachary Smallwood, David Rogers, Mark Richardson, and Phil Markham. We welcome the public, and we thank you for attending our meeting. We're always grateful to have you participating. Some etiquette items to review. We ask that you take a moment to silence your cellphones. When it comes time to make a comment on the agenda, we ask that you come to the podium and speak into the microphone for the recording. And we also ask that you state your name and address for the minutes. Once the item that you are here for is over, you are welcome to leave. We just ask that you do so quietly so that we can continue with our remaining agenda items. If you are viewing this meeting online on the live stream, the only way to make a public comment is to email planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. If you post a comment on the Facebook or YouTube's comment section, it will not be seen tonight. So we will start with our item number one, our meeting minutes from October 3rd. Have all the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion? I'll entertain a motion.
Should we just make the comment that these minutes aren't the corrected minutes and the corrected minutes of what we're motioning?
I'll re-upload the packet and everything with the corrected minute on the website and everything.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for the corrected minutes that we've talked about in the pre-meeting.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the October 3rd, 2024 minutes as we discussed in the pre-meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And me opposed? All right, the motion passes. Conflict of interest. Do any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of our agenda items this evening?
No.
No.
Neither do I. Item number three, approval of findings of facts. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review the findings of fact and conclusions for the conditional use permit for revision scar therapy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
This one had the small correction. I assume that'll be in there.
Yes.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of facts for revision scar therapy, including the correction we made in the pre-meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And me opposed? We will move on now to agenda item number four, Crockett Auto Sales. Is the applicant here? Okay, great. First, we'll have a presentation from staff, and then we'll have you come up.
Thank you, Commission. So this is a conditional use permit for an auto sales business in the manufacturing general zone located at 5226 South Commerce Drive, number three. So it is a .61 acre site. The unit itself will be just over 2,000 square feet, and it's surrounded primarily by light manufacturing with some office to the south. Here are all the different zones that surround this area. It is just off of Commerce Drive with I-15 on the west side, north of 5300 South. So the applicant has provided a site plan and a floor plan. You can see on the screen in front of you the unit that the applicant intends to use, and with the floor plan that has the showroom, which is where the vehicles will be stored, an office space, restrooms, and an entrance and lobby area. So for parking and access, this property has a shared access, which you can see I've circled in red that comes off of Commerce Drive. The parking that they are required to have is four stalls, and they have indicated that they have five stalls that will be available to them. So as a condition of approval, the applicant will restripe the parking areas, and this will occur in the spring and was already planned, and I sent, I gave you all an email in the pre-meeting that shows that the property owner has planned on doing that. And so the applicant has shown that they meet parking requirements. So Chapter 17.68 requires that landscaping in the front setback area for all commercial areas. There was a chart that was included in your packet that shows the landscaping that they have and what is needed, and the applicant has indicated that the property owner will be required, the landscaping, will be adding the required landscaping in the spring, and so staff does not have any concerns with their landscaping. So we have a noticing requirement to send notices to surrounding property owners for conditional use permits. So 12 notices were sent to all property owners located within 300 feet of the subject property, and as of the date of this meeting, staff has not received any public comments. So based on an analysis of the conditional use permit application, staff has found the following. So the proposed use for an auto sales business is allowed in the MG zone subject to conditional use approval. With the conditions outlined in the staff report, the proposed use and property will comply with the standards of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance, and the proposed use is not contrary to the goals and objectives of the Murray City General Plan in this area. So based on our analysis, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property located at 5226 South Commerce Drive, number three, subject to the following conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a simple question on the conditions. Who does the permitting for signs?
So in order to get a sign, you have to have a building permit. So it's our building department, and planning staff reviews those as part of the building permit application process.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions I think it's appropriate to ask now. If not, tell me. I can wait. In our packet where we discuss project description, I think the last sentence was just a little unclear to me, so I want to make sure, see if it was unclear to others, or make sure it's not unclear to the applicant. And in that sentence, we said the cars will be housed and displayed inside the dealership that may be brought out for display, test drives, and so on. I think, to me, what I think we're saying is that you can store and display inside, but you can only temporarily display outside. Is that what that sentence says?
So staff is under the impression that the cars will be housed primarily inside and will be brought out occasionally just for display or a test drive, just temporarily, that the primary display will be located within the building.
Awesome. One other question. We talked about this in pre-meeting, but I think we're all expecting a deferral agreement for the landscaping. I don't think we've discussed that in the packet. Is it? Did I just miss it?
So a deferral was not specifically mentioned, but the applicant is aware that they need to comply with landscaping, and that the property owner has indicated that that will be done in the spring, so we will, we will work out the agreements to make sure that that happens.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
We kind of talked about earlier, too. Is there any reason they couldn't use one of those parking spaces as a display area?
So they need to make sure that the four spaces that they have are used for the customers. They have indicated that they have five spaces, so they could use one space as a display space, but the applicant's aware that primarily the spaces are to be used for customers and that the display will be used temporarily. That the primary display will be inside the building, and they'll be brought out for special occasions rather than that being the primary storage location.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, if we could have the applicant come forward. And if you would state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Jim Crockett, and I live at 7 Circle Oaks in Sandy.
Great. Have you had an opportunity to review the conditions?
Yes.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
Yes.
Great. Is there any additional information you'd like to give the Commission?
One additional one is I've looked into it further, and the number of parking spots is actually more like 10 or 11.
That are available?
That are available.
Okay.
That are assigned to that property. So that's, which re raises the question. So the intent is primarily for them to be inside, but, so let me ask that question. If, if I keep four available outside, does that open up a few spots for display?
I think there's some variables in the discussion, right? Because the parking can't be in front of the overhead garage.
So what I would, what I would recommend is figuring out in your lease how many are reserved, making sure it's that five, because there probably are other businesses that operate there as well that also need to meet the parking requirements. But yeah, if you have additional spaces, we just need those four reserved for, for yourself, right? And then any patrons of the business.
Yep, makes sense.
Yeah.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, we'll have you sit down. Thank you so much. I will now open the meeting for public comment regarding this item. If you would like to make an agenda, a comment on this agenda item, you can do so by coming to the podium. Please state your name and address into the microphone for the record before you comment, and try to keep your thoughts to three minutes. We also ask that you offer new information in your comments. Please do not rehash any already stated concerns. After the public comment portion of this meeting, we will address any of your questions or concerns with the applicant or with staff. So at this time, if there's anyone that would like to make a public comment regarding this agenda item? Did you receive any email comments? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
Head of Chairman, I have a question that the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit to allow an auto sales business at the property addressed 5226 South Commerce Drive, number 13, subject to the conditions listed.
Number three. Did you say 13 or three?
I don't know. Drive, South Commerce Drive, number three.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker and a second by Commissioner Henry to approve a conditional use permit to allow the auto sales business at the property located 5226 South Commerce Drive, number three, subject to the seven conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can take a vote.
Commissioner Heristo?
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich?
Yes.
Chair Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes. Congratulations and good luck with your business. Thanks so much for being here tonight. All right, agenda items number five and six will be presented together, and then we'll have two votes on them. Is the applicant here? Great. Okay, first we'll have a presentation.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yeah, this is a request from Justin Lang for the Murray Fields Town Homes, planned unit development and preliminary subdivision approval for 36 townhomes at 770 and 780 West 5300 South, located just north of 5300 South and a little west of Seventh West. It was rezoned in October of 2023 to RM15, which allows densities up to 12 units per acre. Let's see. So here is the preliminary plat showing all the different, all the different townhome lots. This one is more informative. I think this is the site plan, which indicates that all the different, all the different lots in the drive there. So as part of this, the setbacks here, as a PUD, it allows for us to, it allows the Planning Commission to grant additional or a reduction in setbacks. So as you can see, and I'll try to zoom in here as well, we'll start with the rear setback So it is from here to this, where you can see kind of, it's a PL is what it actually says, property line, is approximately 10 feet. However, there is an additional property right here that is owned by Murray City, and that is an additional, it varies anywhere from 12 to, I think, 20 feet in width. So normally, the, the planning staff and the engineering staff wouldn't recommend such a narrow or a reduced setback. Typically, we do, you know, maybe five feet reduction from the 25 feet or so. But because of this unique circumstance, it puts this one specifically at about 30 feet measured from this building line to this property line. So it is almost, it's actually a little bit bigger than what a standard subdivision would be. So I don't know if I stated this, but this is owned by Murray City. It was previously used as a stormwater line. That has since been abandoned. Justin, or Mr. Lang has been approached the city about potentially purchasing that, and I think those negotiations might still be ongoing. If not, Murray City will still retain the property. We have no intention on surplusing it otherwise. So, and then with the front yard setback, which is the stuff on 5300 South, again, there's a unique circumstance here, and it's best illustrated right here. This is the, everything that is not colored along 5300 South is considered the right-of-way line. So that is all owned by the Utah Department of Transportation, and as you can see, it's very large. 5300 South by itself is already a very large right-of-way. You have four travel lanes, a very wide shoulder, and a very wide middle lane. So we were comfortable to allow him to have, to push those, those properties here as far back as he could get them, to move these properties up as close as he could get them to meet his maximum density. When, when we reviewed this, it goes anywhere from like 60 feet to 100 and, I think, 104 feet to the right-of-way line, and then, sorry, 60 feet to the right-of-way line, which would, to the sidewalk, I should say, to the sidewalk area, and then once you get to asphalt, it's about 104 feet. So staff is confident that that is more than adequate. Even if UDOT were to expand 5300 South, they could add probably four more lanes in each direction, and you still wouldn't have a setback that is to a degree that would impact this area as well.
Mr. Small, while you're on that, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Could you show us where a deceleration lane would be placed if they were to place one in there? How would that affect this?
If anything, I mean, this is what UDOT has shown, and we can ask Mr. Lang on this, but I would assume, again, this has a very wide shoulder, right? So I don't even know if they would require a Dcel lane. So the access would be approximately here coming out, and you have this very wide shoulder that would act as probably the Dcel lane if required, but I don't anticipate that they would require one. Those are usually used on narrower right-of-ways typically, when there's, when there's a shoulder.
They don't have that approval from DOT for this? No.
So no, they don't have an official, they have a preliminary approval. So as I mentioned in the pre-meeting, when we rezoned this, the entire reason staff was comfortable supporting the rezone was because there was a, an agreement to provide an access onto 5300 South. Typically, UDOT says no. Specifically, we tried to get an access here for this property to the south. Well, I've redid, and, and they said no multiple times.
And that's why I asked a question.
So.
They wouldn't allow them to leave outside the road.
He does have an active permit, and, and the engineering staff and planning staff has received assurances from, from UDOT that this will, that he will eventually get one. It might take some time. And then if he doesn't get one, it doesn't move forward. So that's really the gist of it.
I guess I'm kind of maybe building a little bit on Commissioner Milkovich's comment. If they adjust the roadway there, we don't know for sure how that affects the setbacks. I mean, we, we can make assumptions, right?
I don't, I don't understand.
If there's a deceleration lane or something else changes there, are we assured that it won't change any of the assumptions we've made on?
I would, I would say it doesn't affect it. Even if there was a deceleration lane added, you can see the sidewalk juts in further here, and you can kind of see where that starts to do that here, along, along here. So you would even be able to put in a Dcel lane pretty wide. I mean, that, from here to here is 10 feet.
That's a lot of that.
Okay, so I guess this is a Dcel lane. And we can, again, this is why we kind of have the applicant explain some of this, too.
Exactly. And that, I kind of what I expected your answer to be, and that your answer kind of made me also think, is that officially a sidewalk, or is that just where people have been walking?
It's a sidewalk.
So that is where the sidewalk would be?
Yeah, it is paved. Yep.
So that kind of helps visualize.
Yep. Yeah. So, do you want to?
I have a question on a different topic, but I don't know if you.
Did you want to?
I don't know if you were able to finish your presentation.
No, I didn't. But, hold on one second. Okay, sorry. So this is the utilities, utility plan. As you can see, water coming up from, from, from this side here, coming down this access drive, or this access easement, and then you have sewer. Recently, Murray City did redo the sewer in this area. It actually comes pretty much through, right there, actually, storm drain. So it's not sewer, storm drain through here. That was, we've been working with Justin on, Mr. Lang, I'm sorry, I just know him on a first-name basis, Mr. Lang on, on that as well. Here is the landscaping plan. It's a very traditional landscape plan. As part of a PUD, they are required to have a dedicated area of open space, which he has shown a walking path up here connecting up with, with this little access here that eventually meets up with some sidewalk that I can again come here and show you. It has a sidewalk that will go through here and then kind of goes through the Applegate area and then connects over to Clover Meadow on this side, and then obviously goes to Smith's and everything over there on the east side. Elevations for you, so there will be two stories on those, that northern side. So no three stories on that side. The, the south side facing 5300 South will be the three-story product showing here, but everything on the north side. He was very cognizant of and mindful about the impacts to the neighbors to the north and wanted to make sure that those were lower heights. So public notices were mailed in connection with the proposed PUD to 203 property owners and affected entities. We received two emails about the property concerned about utility access on, on this property right here, which we can discuss further if you'd like. Findings with the conditions, the proposed subdivision compliance with the standards in the Murray City Subdivision Ordinance. The lots will comply with the development standards in Chapters 17.120 and 17.60 of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance. Proposed subdivision is in harmony with the purposes of the RM15 zone, and the proposed subdivision is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Murray City General Plan. So with that, we are recommending approval of the planned unit development and granting preliminary subdivision for the Murray Fields, property addressed 770 and 780 West 5300 South, subject to the eight conditions. And I'm happy to take questions. Oh, let me, let me go back. Sorry, I noticed notes. So parking, parking is required at two and a half spaces per unit. So with the 36 units, that comes out to 90 spaces. They provided 124 through the garage spaces, and then also those, those driveway spaces are large enough to fit two vehicles as well. So with that.
And is 10 feet adequate length for vehicles on that?
Driveway?
Driveways?
They're longer. The driveways are longer than 10 feet.
You've only got a 10-foot setback in the front of the buildings?
Right.
The driveway's in the rear?
So the driveways are located right here. So they're located along the private access.
And that's considered the back of the building?
Yeah, back of the buildings.
And the front door's on the other side?
Okay, on the, on the fencing on the, on the north of that property, you said that the applicant has proposed to maintain the existing fence along the north boundary line?
Uh huh.
Are you talking the boundary line of the houses that are there, or the boundary line that does not include that Murray City-owned right-of-way?
I believe it would not include the Murray City property, but again, I'd kind of defer to Mr. Lang to kind of explain that a little bit more in depth. He's not proposing, because it's technically Murray City property between the, the property owners to the north. He would have to put that, if he were to do fencing, he would have to do fencing.
Well, that's what I would expect.
Yeah, out of.
So is there a fence there? Well, when you say maintaining, you're just talking the fence line?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe there is a fence like along this side that he would maintain and keep, keep the same as well.
And if he were to purchase that property?
Uh huh.
How does that affect these setbacks?
It doesn't?
Does, if he were to, I assume if he purchased that property, he would add, he would add that on to this?
He would, he would, he, there's a, it's a little more complex than that, because technically, you can't see it very well, but that, that little sliver is still zoned R18. So if he wanted to add it as part of like open space or something to, to that, that would have to be rezoned, because we can't have properties in two zoning districts.
And it would have to be a change to the?
Yeah, it would have to be a subdivision, first rezoned, and then a subdivision amendment to include it.
And if he were to do that, that's an interesting question, because if he were to purchase that property and go through the process to have it rezoned prior to building, then he could change where his layout or where the buildings exist, but it's not really...
He would still, he would still have to come, most likely have to come back before this body.
It's not really in his favor.
Right, yeah.
That would change, that would basically change this whole, this approval would almost become void in a sense.
We would most likely make him come back in, in that instance, because I think he would have to do a preliminary all over again. I don't think it could just be addressed in a final.
I, I, I'm just concerned about, even with that strip of land there, I'm still a little bit apprehensive about the 10-foot setback. Knowing that slivers there makes me a whole lot more comfortable.
Uh huh.
Okay, just appreciate the information.
Yeah.
Who owns the trees on that right property, where the pathway will be, the existing trees, and will?
So this stuff here?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I pointed, this stuff here, right. That would be owned by the HOA.
Okay, so they would most likely keep those and maintain those trees?
We, we can ask the applicant if that's his intent. I don't know how much, how much of those are viable, good trees, quote unquote, good trees, and not.
I think they're Siberian elms, I think, if I remember, which are trash trees, for the record.
Okay, are there any further questions for staff? All right, if we could have the applicant come forward. Thanks for being here. If you could state your name and address for the record?
Justin Lang, 811 Clover Meadow Drive.
Great. And have you had an opportunity to review the conditions?
Yes.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
Yes.
Great. Is there any additional information you'd like to give the Commission?
I can field those questions.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If they re-go through them. But the fencing issue with the sliver of land, so we initially tried to purchase that sliver of land. We were told we couldn't do it. It was too long of a process. After we went through boundary line agreement, because there was a lot of stuff messed up with the boundary lines, they said, ah, we actually are willing to give that to you. We said, we can deal with that after this thing, but our intent would be not to add it to this, not to do anything with it. We would just take it off Murray City, leave. We would just take it off Murray City, leave, have our title company just redistribute it to the people who already have it in their backyard current." So I live on 811 is one of the yards that backs that. So it's five feet of that Murray City currently-owned property is in my backyard. It's been fenced in for 50 years. I don't know why it was there. So we didn't want to change anyone's fence line, we don't want to tear anyone's backyards up. We just said, "We can just take it, redistribute it to the people that already own it, and make the fence line the new property line," instead of trying to move stuff around. And as part of that, what Zach was saying with the fencing is, we just want to leave the existing fence that people have up. Most of people have put new vinyl fencing in. And we just said, "Hey, we'll replace any fence that's not new vinyl fence. Anyone who has the old chain link or something, or a wood fence they want taken out, we'll just make it all match all the way across, but I don't want to tear everyone's yards up just to put a new fence in that they just put in, basically."
Well, okay, but if you do that, you're on city property right now, unless you buy...
The fence line has been on city property since it was built. So that neighborhood from the 1970s...
Fence mess.
Well, it would be rededicated to those property owners, right?
If we took the Murray City property, we would re, just rededicate it and make the fence line the new property line. It would have nothing to do with our subdivision, it would just be a...
And if I can just, that is all contingent upon him getting that property. Right now, we can't condition, we couldn't condition him to put a fence on Murray City property.
Okay, maybe changes my question a little bit then. So if that property line, or that fence has been there for, what you said, 30 years?
At least, at least 50.
I don't know what the legal term is. Those property owners have a prescriptive easement, or, and that isn't the right word. That is basically the de facto property line at this point.
It is. And we just want to leave it the same.
So that maybe goes back and says this setback, to juris, it's 10 feet, but de facto, it's really, or it's close to 25 feet, but it really isn't.
More.
It's less.
No, it goes to the...
The setbacks go to the real property line, not to where the fence is.
Right. Legally, it goes to where the rear property... Go ahead, sorry.
So if they by chance get this additional property from the city, their setback is actually increased, because there's more property behind the homes.
It's increased from the 10 feet, but it won't be increased to 20, to 25?
No, it will increase more than what it is today, or what is being proposed.
Well, again, not if they turn that property over to the homeowners that already have that fence line there.
It still increases it.
It increases it from 10 feet, but it still doesn't give you the 25 feet.
You're correct, it wouldn't give them the 25 feet that would be required as part of the RM15, and that's why they're here with a PUD.
I appreciate him.
Let me, can I finish? So, you would need, that's the whole point of a PUD, is that it does allow for a reduction in setbacks, and we do that fairly often. We go down to 15 feet pretty regularly in rear yards or in front yards.
Well, and that depends a little bit on what's behind, or next to the property, too.
So the setback that we got is based off, you can't quite see it, because there's a white box over it, but this is called Chestnut Place. And the buildings on the, you can see the black line right under the T there. That's a 10-foot setback. So we basically just mimicked these exact setbacks from the neighboring HOA.
Do you want to speak quickly to the deceleration lane?
Yeah, can you pull up that? So UDOT is requiring an XL and Dcel with a little pork chop there, so we can have ride-in, ride-out-only traffic on there. We will, so we don't disturb the traffic along 5300. The shoulder of 5300 is huge right now, but we will have curb and gutter poured and fill in the asphalt however wide they need.
So you're saying that's already been considered as part of the lane?
This is designed by UDOT, we don't get to decide what they...
So Mr. Lang, the drawing here we're looking at is what you're, that is what you're talking about? It's already...
Yeah, that's an XL and Dcel lane, and that's a little concrete pork chop.
So how long is that? It looks like it's almost half the length of the whole development. It's some length.
Yeah, it is, gosh, I want to say 300 feet or something like that.
It looks like it's over 300 feet, because if you take this line from here to here, that's 320 feet.
Yeah, so it might be 350. So it's designed by the UDOT traffic engineer, they said, "The speed limit on this road is this, you have to have a Dcel and XL lane that's this long," so.
And it's a car-wide, one lane-wide?
Yeah, essentially, I think they're 19 feet wide or 20 feet wide.
I guess part of the reason I asked that is for scale, understand, and then also understand how much space there still exists between that road and our setbacks, where the property line begins for the setbacks.
There's tons of land there, and we went through UDOT with this, and they said, "Well, you know, because the future potential widening of 5300 is not possible, because it actually, their right-of-way bumps way out right there, but then the chestnut buildings you can see right there. So they can't widen that road into where our setbacks will be anyway." So, because we have that weird little triangle bump out.
I would say, though, if you see for scale, this is like a truck, it looks like. That tiny little white dot is a truck. And so, you would have, what, 1, 2, 3, 4?
Yeah, so you can see where it's lighter.
Six in each direction, almost.
Where it's lighter is the existing shoulder. It's just a huge, I mean, we get semis that park and sleep the night there already, because the shoulder's so wide, so.
Do you think the UDOT approvals are going to delay your development?
No, so UDOT has given us a construction permit, so they'll allow us to move forward with construction. The problem is, this is called a limited access line, so we just have to go through UDOT's process, where we have to get appraisals and surveys. So they said, "We're sorry, we brought that up sort of way too late, so we're going to give you your construction permit, and then we're going to let you deal with our UDOT logistics."
Because we were worried about that. I remember asking you about that when you were here in October, like you got a UDOT approval, so.
Well, we still have it, but they're just making us do a bunch of more hoops for it, so.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you tell us about the walking path? Is that going to be just a slope up, and, or is it going to be terraced? And what, is it going to be natural, or are you going to landscape it?
I think we're going, we're planning on just, I don't know what they call it, compacted base, just sort of like a gravel path. Just a place for people to hang out. So this does get sort of steep right in the middle. So they're, we'll probably have a little terrace right behind the buildings, where it's flattened out slightly. I mean, it already existing is slightly flatter there, and then it'll walk up the hill, and that's just to connect them back to, there's a catwalk that goes into the neighborhood, and then the bus stop is up there, and it's just sort of a walking exit, and just a community area.
So you're not going to lay grass that whole hill, you're going to just have it natural?
It'll probably be grass right behind the buildings, but no, we won't maintain it up the hill. It'll be natural, I mean, they'll zero-scape it, they'll landscape it, because it's existing, it's just weeds and stuff, but yeah, it won't, it won't be maintained lawn.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll have the applicant sit down, and I will open this agenda item up for public comment. If you would like to make a comment, we ask that you come to the microphone and state your name and address. If there's anyone that would like to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is Harry, Harry Hankins. I just live in the condos just west of the development. Do you know when they're going to start construction?
We can address all questions with the applicant or staff after the public comment period.
So I could ask, I could ask Justin?
Yeah, so, well, your question we'll address after the public comment portion.
Do you know if his, any of his units are going to look down on ours? I mean, are his taller than ours? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, we'll address all of your questions after the public comment portion.
Okay, then, how are you, how's he going to get, if you live in these condos, how are you going to get on 5300 South going east or west?
You won't, right turn only.
Just west?
Yep, just west.
Okay, just west, okay. And are they going to have any kind of a tall wall between our condo association and his most west unit, I guess, or by the road that I saw coming out there? That's all. That's my, so anything I could think of, actually.
Great, thank you so much. Any other comments?
Good evening. I'm not sure this is the comment right now, or the two emails that you referred to. I'm Kyle Miller, by the way. If those are going to be read into the record first.
So, they were provided to them, I won't read them into the record, I provided them.
I'll just stay here then, huh?
Yeah, just make sure to state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Kyle Miller, I reside at 4709 Moss Creek Circle, Murray, Utah. And my concern, so you guys...
Sorry, will you just make sure you speak into the microphone, just because this meeting's being recorded? Thank you so much.
So you're aware of the emails, so if I, I don't need to go too much into that. So obviously, my concern mainly is just the potential landlocked scenario that might happen, but perhaps it's not. It might already, maybe the utility aspect has been provided for. I talked to Zach, and I don't think Zach knew at the time. And we've been pen pals for about three years, but I think this is the first time I've seen you, Justin. And by the way, I think your project is fantastic. That has, I think that's definitely the highest and best use of land, in my opinion. Had some experience in this, so. So my concern is just that, and I could go into my concerns, but I'm not so sure if it's really something that I need to be concerned with, or it's already been addressed. So I don't know. Should I go into the concern as if it's not addressed?
You could bring it up, kind of like how I had mentioned in my reply to you.
Well, what you said in the reply is that the cities don't get involved. But in fact, I think they do. The Municipal Land Use and Development Act provides assurance that the development would ensure access and infrastructure to adjacent properties. So that, in fact, is my concern. Developers typically must account for adjacent properties that include access to utilities. It's necessary for equitable development. So that's my premise. And as you're aware on the email, things were established that he was going to have utilities put into my, you know, right by my property. And that's the way it was going for, just what the email states. I don't want to be too redundant and take too much time, but just what that says. And then in May, he said he had changed his mind, but I don't know if that left a provision for access to the utilities. Because I am landlocked, that cul-de-sac, I'm not sure if you want to look at the screen or if you know, but the cul-de-sac on Clover Meadows, you know, close to Justin's neighbor. We tried to secure that park strip 20 years ago. And, you know, we just were, you know, it was, it just wasn't successful. He just wasn't interested, so it's just been in that state. I was an active builder, we were active builders at the time. And we just wanted to develop three lots. In fact, we spent considerable monies having Flint survey, develop a plat map. So that's how seriously we're about getting utilities in. Back then, we couldn't do it. So the natural thought is to, oh, let's wait for a future development, and we could hook up at that time. Well, that time is now, so.
Okay, well, we can address it with that.
Okay.
Great, thank you so much. Any additional comments? Did we receive any email comments?
Yeah, I do have an email that I'll read into the record. So we received this at 4:47 this evening from Abby Thurman.
Hello, I'm writing about the Justin Lane development on 5300 South. I can't make the hearing, but wanted to weigh in. I live at 841 West Clover Meadow Drive, pretty much smack in the middle of the development. To be honest, I'd do just about anything to block some of the road noise from 5300 South, but I'm very concerned about losing our privacy. The flyer that I was sent shows the buildings going right up to the property line. Is that accurate? Is there really going to be a building wall just on the other side of my fence? I'd like to know exactly how far that will be. Will there be windows facing my property? What are the plans to maintain privacy between the condos and the existing homes? How are the builders going to mitigate noise during construction? Is the developer going to be responsible for putting new fencing in place? What is the overall timeline? When will construction begin and end? I understand the need to provide more multifamily housing in our area. I just hope that the planning committee in Murray City are taking current residents and their properties into account and keeping our interests and privacy in mind. If you have any questions for me, reply to this email, or call or text me at 801-503-4973. Abby Thurman.
Okay, if there's been no additional emails, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back for, let's answer, I guess, some of those questions.
For sure. So, I think regarding construction, we can ask Justin about that one, because I don't know. But regarding the utilities that Mr. Miller brings up, he had stated that he is landlocked. If we look here, this would best illustrate it, I think. It does have access through this right here, that accesses the back of the property. And that's how he would get utilities. That's why in my reply, I had stated that we would not get involved between two property owners deciding. If it were indeed landlocked, and he didn't have a way to get across the public right-of-way, that I would, we would be addressing. But as there, and you can kind of see it here, but it's this black line that touches on to, on to 53rd, that he is allowed to get in there. It does limit the availability of the property, because he would not be able to put in a public street in there at all to have access, you know, to do more than what's there, than a single-family dwelling. But that's kind of the case for the utilities. And I'm sorry if I pronounce your name wrong, Mr. Atkins. So, again, when construction starts, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Lang deal, answer that question. Looking down on other people, based on these, it's about, it looks like the highest the two stories could be is 29 feet. So they, I'm not sure, I don't know how tall the houses are next on Clover Meadow, but 29 feet is the height for the two stories.
And that's an average two-story house?
That is an average two-story house.
Not any taller than having a backyard neighbor, right?
Exactly, yeah, and I would say that any single-family home, well, technically, in this zone, you're allowed to go up to 40 feet with planning commission approval. Like I had mentioned in the presentation, that he... Like I had mentioned in the, in the presentation, that he's made a conscious effort not to have three stories on that backside there. Other than that, let me...
On that map, could you show us which property is owned by the person that sent you that comment?
I believe it's this, I think it's this one. Oh, wait, no, 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 I lied, it's this one right here. Yeah. Abby Thurman.
And then, will there, will there be fencing on that west side between the other...
I believe there is fencing there currently. We'll have you come up and, and speak to us, so they, just so that they can get it on the record. But there is fencing there, I think, currently, and there's not a proposal to install new fencing, but we can discuss that with, with Mr. Lang here.
Yeah, if we could have the applicant come forward, do you want to address some of those questions?
Yeah, so there is existing fencing on the west side that Chestnut Place installed several years ago, I mean, it's vinyl fencing, it's, it's nice. None of our units are terribly close to that fence line anyway, that's where our road comes in, and, and our detention pond is right there. So that side, I wouldn't worry about, yeah, looking down. But yeah, I did work really hard, I fought my builder every single day to not put three stories against, because like I said, one of those is my house, so I also didn't want three stories looking down into my yard. Several of those are Rambler style. My, my house and the, the two neighboring houses are Rambler styles, so they are shorter than what's going in, but what we're putting in is, is significantly shorter than most of the two stories in that neighborhood, so.
Were there any other questions we wanted him to?
The utility thing with, with Kyle. So, yes, I did, I talked to Kyle about trying to get the sewer line to go out to Clover Meadow, but the same little strip of land he couldn't get through years ago, I couldn't get through, so we had to move, the sewer line now goes in through my yard to Clover Meadow, so. That's, yeah, I, I didn't move it because I wanted to, I moved it because I, I didn't have another option, so. That was the only way to get the sewer connected, because there's no utilities in 5300 South, so.
Mr. Smallwood, I guess I'll expose my ignorance a little bit, just when a piece of property is landlocked, to me, that can mean multiple things. It could be, I can't get a car to my house, or it could mean I can't get power to my house, or I can't get sewer to my house, or I can't get electricity to my house, and all those have different access points depending where they currently exist, right? So that driveway to the south, that potential driveway, that's public land that will maintain, will remain a drive access to his property, is that right, between 53rd and Kyle's property?
Do you mean Kyle, Kyle's property right here? Yeah, this, so it, it's closing off, it's closing off the access that this property has to 53rd, but it still allows him to, this singular property to have that access there.
But I guess my question is, when you say access, you mean physical access? How does that apply to, like, sewer and power? I mean, would be access, in my mind, it would be access to sewer or power if on 53rd there was a public water line running, or a public sewer line, right?
Correct, yeah. This is currently on septic, and it would have to remain on septic.
On septic, okay, that was my question.
Yeah, yeah. Unless they, unless for some reason they install something on...
Sounds like he would have to do the original plan and try and get access on Clover Meadow, because there is no in 53rd, so he would just have to do the same steps that you did, if he wanted to connect to them.
We're not blocking any access, we just also couldn't get it.
He would just have to do the same steps of it.
There's a piece of land between his land and Clover that he can't get access through.
Yeah, so there's a little, there's a little piece right here that this, that this property owner owns, and then this is Murray City, I believe, owned. It, it looks like a thicker black line, which is that little accessway that I was mentioning that connects up here.
It, it's a four-foot sidewalk, it's a catwalk that goes up, so it's not...
I didn't even know it was there until I actually started looking for it, it's weird.
And then what about your timeline, some people asked about?
Pending Murray City approval. So we'll, we will send our bid set out right when we can. We'll begin construction as soon as we can. I, I don't know the timeline on the actual buildings. My hope would be to finish with what's called flatwork, so roads, utilities, gutters, by summer, but I don't, I don't know about the vertical construction timeline.
Okay.
So I, I won't be, I won't be heading that, so.
Were there any other questions we missed?
I think we just mentioned, I think there was a mention about how are they going to keep the sound down during construction, and I think we just mentioned there's sound regulations that they'll have to follow.
Yeah, and, yeah, there are, there are noise ordinances in place that know working from, I believe, you know, like, I think it's like 10 a.m. to, or 10 p.m. to 7 a.m., and if there's ever anything like that, you can always call. Call the non-emergency dispatch, or call the city, and, and we can send somebody out to, to deal with that.
I don't foresee any problem there.
There was one more, I thought, there's a question, the first, sorry, there's a question the first gentleman raised about whether there was going to be a wall constructed on the, was it the west end?
On the west side, yeah, between us and this.
Differentiate.
Yeah, we have no plan, there's a fence there, we just plan on leaving, I don't, I don't know why we would build a wall, but...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thanks.
I will bring this item back for discussion or a motion.
And I'm chairman, I make motion that the planning commission approve planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for Murray Fields on the property is addressed 770 and 780 West, 5300 South, subject to the following conditions that were on the screen earlier.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Hacker and a second by Commissioner Aristo to approve the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for Murray Fields on the properties addressed 770 and 780 West, 5300 South, subject to the eight conditions. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can call for vote.
Perfect. Commissioner Hacker?
I think it's a great development, yes.
Commissioner Aristo?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. So, motion approved, good luck, know you still have lots of steps left, but yeah, we're, we're really excited, you worked really hard, we can tell, and what's been presented to us, so, thank you so much for being here. Okay, is there any further business?
We will have a pretty, a decent-sized meeting on the 5th, so let me know if you're not going to be there. We have a number of items, site plan, conditional use, Brad Reynolds' Wagon Master project coming forward. Yeah, it's going to be, I think it'll be a fun meeting, it's very different. Also, are you going to say what I think you're going to say?
When, when you're done.
Okay. And then I do anticipate having something on the 19th as well, we do have a couple items already being scheduled for that, so just let me know if, if you're not going to be able to make it, so we can prepare accordingly. And then I'll turn it over to Phil, because he has some...
I just wanted to, to take a minute, and first of all, thank everybody. My tenure as CED director will end on January the 3rd, so that's my last day with the city. A successor has been named, it is Chad Wilkinson from Leighton City. He is currently the CED director in Leighton, yes, Marin.
Okay, I was going to say, wait, did you work for Murray City before?
About 10 years ago, approximately 10 years ago, when I was on the planning commission, the first time Chad was staff here. He has, he has worked at Bountiful since leaving Murray a few years ago, and has been in Leighton City for about five or six years as their director up there.
What a cool way to come back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited for the city, he's, he's very qualified, he knows the city, and I think it's a, it's a great replacement. So, again, I just wanted to thank all of you and wish you good luck.
Hey, Phil, thank you for telling us about it, you should join our last...
That was my question, Phil.
Party.
We have a couple vacancies that we need to fill.
I've, I've had my time on the planning commission.
No, he means coming to the party.
Join the party.
The way we've read, we've reviewed this last week, last month, last meeting, and where obviously we can have you back on the council, or on the commission again, so.
That, that is a possibility, but a remote possibility.
Talk to the mayor.
Put it that way. But thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second.
Meeting adjourned at 7:33.